They were desperate, I suppose, for an article in Muhlenberg. And it had, I think, a picture of some girls at a storied house in Muhlenberg. In today's paper.
Print?
No, yeah. Actually, the old-fashioned.
I probably bought about ten.
Yeah, the papers.
I've got the papers.
Yeah, me too. I wonder how much longer that can happen. It's gonna go, by the way, the milk. I still walk, I go out there.
As long as. There's still a certain amount of advertising revenue generated by print media that I still think would be difficult to replace that with online media. Maybe the only reason that's holding.
So, anyway, but there was an article today about Muhlenberg.
Thank you.
They're not there all the time, so.
Yeah, that might have just gone to recycle because I'll get through the Gazette, but I won't always get through the Observer.
Hello, Walter?
Hello?
Hello, Walter, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. We have, the meeting has not quite started yet. Are you parked safely?
Yes, I am.
Okay, alright, good.
He's coming through.
Yes, you are coming through very clearly.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're getting, we're just about ready to start.
He's still okay with postponing this, but.
Okay, the mayor said we're ready, so we're moving.
Yeah, but he would like to be here for the vote.
Yeah, but he could vote. I mean, why go through all this if we're not gonna vote?
Well, I think he wants to be able to hear anyone that's gonna speak to it in public expression. I don't know, we allowed you to vote.
It's six oh two, y'all gonna dock my pay? We're glad y'all here, we're glad you're here for whatever reason you're here, and on a beautiful day like today. I'd like to, at this time, to call on Councilman Dave Curlin for the prayer, after which, if you'd please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Councilman? After the council. They're ready to pledge, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna read a devotional from an unknown author, and this would probably have best been read first thing this morning, but, you know, if you can take it into the context of the day, if you'd like, you may bow your heads, if not, that's okay, too. The name of this is called "Just For Today." Just for today, I will live this one day without worrying about all the problems I face. Just for today, I will take one small step without ever turning back or joining in a race. Just for today, I will face reality without trying to change what I can never change. Just for today, I will be more brave without ever fearing the dark, unseen, and strange. Just for today, I will help someone else without asking for thanks or a return to me. Just for today, I will live with a smile without dwelling upon what might, could, or should be. Just for today, I will make my life easy without fretting about my pain, sorrow, and strife. Just for today, I will live this one day because it will be the best day of my life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item C is the adoption of the agenda.
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Mr., go ahead.
Go.
You mean to do what I was gonna do?
Uh, I'm gonna.
You're gonna wait?
I'm gonna, after the D, I'll go, okay?
Okay.
We'll do it together. Item D is the approval of the minutes of regular council meeting of March eighteenth. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Also, the council work session, March twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteenth, is there a motion?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in discussion, all in favor? Okay, and lastly, on that, the regular council meeting, April one, twenty-fourteen, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second again.
Is there a discussion? All in favor? I'd like to, before we get to the next item, there are two notes that I have received, and I felt like really should be read, a prior of both of them, for different reasons. Your, this is to the mayor and the city council, both of them. Your kind and thoughtful expression of sympathy is deeply appreciated and gratefully acknowledged. Dear mayor and city council, thank you for the flowers sent to Mother's Memorial. I am grateful for the many phone calls and messages from each of you during this trying time. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Ashley Smith. Thank you very much. This, uh, thank you. This other one, I found somebody to give this one to, to maybe mount. Just came right out of, came to my home. Dear city council, well, we need this one, and you too. Dear city council, we, the staff of First United Methodist Church, want to simply thank you for serving our city. We are grateful for your willingness to serve in Christ's love. And it's signed by every one of them. David Christie, Dan White, just on it on. Some, you can't read, that Carol White. I thought that was a very, very nice card for you, for you Methodist.
Yeah.
Well, here, I'll pass that on.
Of course.
Thank you for that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. Kimball is out of town, he's in Tucson, Arizona, on the way there, and he's not here tonight, of course, and he's asked that the, uh, the agenda item for Mr. Clay be postponed for two weeks. And it's been a precedent on that once before, we postponed it for Councilman Gallagher, he was in Honduras in the mountains, he couldn't call him. He's way back in those mountains, the Indians after him or something. But, anyway, Mr. Kimball's asked if we postpone that two weeks, so they asked me if I would present that, and I would be glad to, so, may I move that as a motion to delay that?
You want to, you're asking to move.
I so moved it to be delayed for two weeks for the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, under discussion, that's item seventeen, of course, we can move it around, but that's the second reading, the, if, it's what you're referring to there.
Yes.
And, help me out on this, I understand, Mr. Kimball, even though he's in Arizona, that he's speaking there on the telephone?
Yes, I think. Mr. Kimball?
Hello, hello, you there?
Yes.
Well, it sounds like he is.
Hello, Ed?
Chief, what are you doing?
Can, can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear you, Ed, go ahead.
Okay, well, the mayor was just asking to, just verifying that you're actually online.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right, and that's what we couldn't do in Honduras.
That's right.
And we tried.
Yeah.
Of course, that, the, I believe the rules, the law goes, and there's the attorney to tell us, but I believe we, we voted at the last meeting, and it has to go for a second reading, which is item seventeen. There's a motion and a second to, to move it to the, what is that next?
Twentieth.
Twentieth? Any other discussion?
One other point, sir. I think Mr. Kimball was concerned that he wanted to be able to hear if any residents were speaking during public expression, and I believe that this system works only through this microphone here, which would make it difficult for him to hear any public individuals who are gonna speak during that time, so he wanted to be present for this vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Is that a two-way?
Yes, sir, it is. If whoever comes to the podium, that they'll speak into the microphone clearly, he will hear.
Okay, so, so he is on the line, and he can hear the public expression. Um, I, you know, we went through all this trouble, I think we should just go ahead and do it.
He wants to be here, that's, he really, even though he can hear, he still wants, he wants to be here at the meeting, in person.
Ms. Craig?
The only, the only question that I have, and refresh my memory, is when, when we postponed it, when Councilman Gallagher was in Honduras, was that a protest petition, supermajority vote?
Yes.
Is that right?
I believe it was, yes.
Okay, and this is, this is just a simple majority, right? Okay, that clarifies it from, for me.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Can we ask Walt if he can hear the public expression? Would, would he mind doing the vote tonight? I, I guess I'm just.
Walt, can you hear that?
No, no, I didn't. I, I couldn't hear you, no.
Tell him again, Ed, you're. I, I think maybe if, if we speak into the microphone, and, can you hear me now?
I, I hear you, Ed, yes. I'm not hearing a lot of the other folks.
Walt, can you hear me?
What?
I guess he did. Walter, can you hear me? This is Todd.
No, no, I, I, who is that, Ed?
Okay, we're, we're trying to do some testing right now, so you can hear me clearly, perhaps if someone from the other, and let's, Steve, can you speak up there? We'll see if, if this should be able to carry to the podium and also across our platform up here.
Hello, Mr. Kimball, this is Steve at the podium, do you hear me?
Hello?
Mr. Kimball, this is Steve at the podium, do you hear me?
Okay, I can, I can barely hear you, I hear Ed pretty well, and I can't hear you that well.
About the public expression, I don't think it would go through when we.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
While the council is debating the motion that's before, as to continue this or not, can you ask Mr. Kimball if he wishes to make a statement as to why he would like the matter to be continued? We can hear you very clearly, Walter, if you will state to the council your reasons for wanting the matter continued for the record, please.
Walt?
Yeah?
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Ed.
What Ash and the mayor are asking is if you could just state the reason why you would like to have this continued to the next meeting, and, and for the record, please.
Thank you. I, I, a couple, a couple actual areas I'd like to touch on. Number one, this seems to be a very important vote, both for the Powell family and also for the residents that live in the affected area, and, you know, and the, and the residents that live slightly outside the area. I would like to hear any other comments during the public expression section, and I'm not sure I will be able to do those, given the reception that I have. Secondly, I believe that in the past, it was a unanimous vote when Councilman Gallagher was out of the country, and this, this frankly, postponement was afforded to him on a very similar type issue. And I feel, again, that it's, it's extremely important for the residents. I've had this trip planned, as you're aware, Ed, we went over my schedule, I believe, towards the end of February, and obviously, we could not have foreseen what was gonna come up in, in May, and I would like to, on behalf of the residents of Ward One and the rest of the residents of the city, I would like to be able to take more of an active part in listening to what, what these folks have to say on both sides. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Of course, we had this hearing, and people did sign up to speak from both sides, all sides.
That's correct, and the public hearing is closed.
Not like we haven't had that.
When we get to item seventeen, there won't be a public hearing, that's correct.
It's not a public hearing, it's just, okay.
Can we kind of, I don't know if we can do this or not, maybe we should ask Ash, can we ask the audience if, I mean, the ones that are signed up to speak, obviously, they'll need to speak at the next meeting, because that's the whole purpose, is to let Walt hear that, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Are they willing to come back and speak?
That, that's up to the chair, that's up to chair of the meeting, it's not typical protocol for, for a matter before the council, we have a motion and a second, and council's deliberating on a matter for you to decide at your discretion, but you can, you can poll the audience if you wish, Mr. Mayor.
I think, I think at the last meeting, and I'm just, you correct me if I'm wrong, you the attorney, but I think at the last meeting, of course, we went on for quite a while, and certainly got the sides of, of all parties, and will be certainly glad to listen on, as long as the five minutes public expression tonight. The, the council cannot answer, respond back to the, to the public expression, and I think all of you know that. So, having said that, and due respect to Mr. Kimball, I, I, I don't know why, if we do it for one, we do it for the others, like he's talking about with Mr. Gallagher, but I, I don't know that that would be setting a precedent if certainly anyone wants to talk. I, I would, there is a motion and a second to, to move it, and I think that, it's my, my opinion, we should vote, Mr. Counsel.
That's at the discretion of the chair, yes, sir.
At this time, we will, would you once, once again, repeat your motion?
That we postpone the item seventeen.
Item seventeen, yeah, item seventeen.
Seventeen, with the Powell property.
Yeah.
Vote, postpone that to the twentieth, the next meeting.
The twentieth of, the twentieth of May.
Sure.
All right, and that's your second.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please.
All right, Mr. Kimball, how do you vote?
Uh, Mr. Kimball?
I vote to postpone.
Okay.
What'd he say?
Yes, yes.
Okay. He's a long way from home.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right opposed?
All right.
Okay.
So, the, the motion does carry.
So, the motion carries, and this item will be then postponed to the next city council meeting on May the twentieth.
Thank you, and, Ed, what I would, thank you all, and what I would also like to do, Ed, if you can hear me, if you could, when I get back, if you could have a CD recording of the, of the meeting available for me, that would be great, before the, the vote.
Absolutely. Yeah, no problem at all.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Walt?
Hello? Yes?
Walt, now, I would remind everyone, you and everyone that's, that's listening, that this is a second reading that we're postponing, okay? It's not open, it's not a hearing. We've had the hearing, am I correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
This is a second reading that will be on the twentieth, okay? Walt, is that all right with you?
I'm not, I'm not hearing all that, Ed, can you repeat it, please?
May I repeat it for you?
Yes. Walt, I was just saying that this, we, it has been moved to the twentieth, that it is a second reading, there will be, you know, no discussion, only, just like it would, would be tonight, but we.
I understand that, sir.
All right, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, moving along.
It is, it is.
We've had the vote. Yeah, enjoy. Okay. Item E, Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee. The proclamation of the Peace Officers Memorial Week, May seven, eleventh through the seventeenth, and the Peace Officers Memorial Day, May fifteenth, is Chairman, Councilman Pierceall.
That's what we were just, that's what we were just discussing, discussing, if there's not anyone that's on the public expression, which comes up after the presentations, you certainly feel free to, to leave if you, well, I don't want you to, but feel free to leave if you want to. I mean, that, that's the end of, item seventeen will not be item seventeen till the twentieth, is that right?
And, and just to clarify, there will be no sign-up sheet for the second reading, okay? Anybody who wants to speak has to sign up under public expression. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that me now?
That's you now, Mr. Pierceall.
All right, I'm gonna sit down to the.
Go ahead.
If I understand correctly, Chief Conley is here to accept this?
He's as close by.
And I will read this proclamation. Whereas it is important for the people of Gastonia and Gaston County to know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our law enforcement officers and agencies. We applaud the members of those agencies for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And our nation, more than ever, depends upon local law enforcement as our first line of defense. The men and women of these agencies give of themselves day in and day out to preserve our homeland security. And in two thousand thirteen, one hundred and five peace officers across the nation, and one from North Carolina alone, were killed in the line of duty. And the members of law enforcement agencies of Gaston County and its municipalities play a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all our local citizens. And it says, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Gastonia do hereby proclaim the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, as Peace Officers Memorial Week, and May fifteenth of two thousand and fourteen as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and join law enforcement officers nationwide in honoring their fallen comrades, and urge the citizens of Gastonia to commemorate law enforcement officers, past and present. Be it further resolved that the citizens of Gastonia recognize and appreciate the contributions made by their local law enforcement officers for handling the difficult situations they encounter on a daily basis. And it is signed by John D. Bridgman, our mayor.
I'd like to present this to Gastonia Police Chief, Stacy Con.
Mayor Bridgman, council, thank you for the proclamation.
Have a couple events I would like to invite you to and mention. First of all, the county memorial service will be tomorrow, First United Methodist Church at ten, ten thirty in the morning. And following the service, there will be wreath laying at Gaston Memorial Park. That will, there'll be, we just travel directly to Gaston Memorial Park after the service, so it's hard on the time, but probably about twelve o'clock on that. The second thing I would like to mention is Special Olympics torch run. We do that in May. The Special Olympics torch run for Gaston County will be on the thirteenth, will start at eight o'clock in the morning. Will start west, seventy-four west, west of Edgewood Road, and we will run all the way down seventy-four till we get to Mecklenburg County line. It's time they'll take it over. So, wanted to make everyone aware of that.
You will be there.
And last but not least, we have our family day coming up next week. That wraps up the memorial week for us. That will be Friday, all day at Rankin Lake Park. Want to invite everyone to that. We will serve supper about five o'clock, and right before that, we'll have an awards ceremony at four o'clock. The park itself will be open for all of the members all day long.
What was the date, that last?
Sorry?
Your date on that last one?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Well deserved, thank you. Also, chief, we want, we're gonna be hearing again from the SWAT team, too, before long here, and their wonderful award that they received. Thank you both. Item F is the presentation, Mr. Melvin Burrus, President of the Gaston Highland Foundation, Inc., reference request for in-kind services, basketball tournament, and family fun day at Irving Center on July seventh through the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen. Before you start, let me say, and I'm sure I speak for the council and for the staff, that we are very aware of the tragedy of the fire at your home and your family, and your home, you said it's being brought back now. We want to certainly let you know that we are very sorry for that happening. I thank y'all, thank you. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Once again, this is our twenty-sixth year of having this Highland Festival. What we're doing is actually in-kind service from the week of July the seventh through the twelfth, that's Monday through Saturday, basically from six PM Monday through Friday to ten PM. That Saturday, we were gonna downscale just a little bit, we're just gonna have the basic stuff from twelve to five, then the softball game out in the park, letting the kids enjoy the swim at the Irving Center. So, that said, we would just like police for security, fire for EMS, and the Irving Center staff, and that's what I'm actually for in-kind service for that week.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move if we do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Look on F one, by the way, I forgot to say that. Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion to move? If not, all in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all again.
Mm-hmm.
And the city was very good to me, the city was, thanks.
It's good. Okay, number two is Ms. Lee Spock, United Way of Gaston County, reference request for in-kind services, Taste of Gaston, September the twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, downtown Gastonia. Lee? My daughter's Lee, and my granddaughter's Lee.
Oh, okay.
L-E-I-G-E.
Well, I'm in good company.
You, oh, yeah. Shit, they are, too.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for your time this evening. As you've been told, my name is Lee Spock, I'm with United Way of Gaston County, and we are very grateful for the in-kind services that the city has offered us in the past. I think most of you are probably familiar with the Taste of Gaston at this point, it's our seventh annual, we're very excited about it. Typically brings three thousand to five thousand people to downtown Gaston, which for the city is a big plus. It is also a plus for the United Way because it enables us to raise extra money, to help those citizens in our county that are most in need. So, we would ask for the in-kind services for September twentieth, street closure from seven AM until seven PM, fire, electric, and police.
And cleanup.
And cleanup, yes, sir. I have been told, and I am on that, I'm gonna make sure I have volunteers after six o'clock, many, so that we can help the city with that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, and question.
And, go ahead, discussion.
How much do you normally raise during this event?
Well, the year before last, which, hold on, I'm old, would be twenty-twelve, we raised twenty-eight thousand dollars. Last year, we raised about twelve thousand eight hundred, right around thirteen. It rained last year, I don't know if y'all remember.
Yes.
Just a gentle misting rain, it was a downpour, so that really hurt the event, but we were very grateful for the money that we did raise, and the sponsors and the people that donated to the event.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Here's a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Lee. The third one is Ms. Heather Adcock, Gaston County Medical Alliance, request for in-kind services, the, I can't pronounce triathlon, around Gaston.
Triathlon.
That's what I said. Okay, triathlon. For kids, September the fourteenth, Gardner Acres Swim Club in Area Streets. I certainly can say Swim Club. Michael, okay. Michael Bix, go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Heather Adcock, and I am with the Gaston County Medical Society Alliance. We are here requesting in-kind service for fire and police for September fourteenth. We hope to host our first annual Youth USA sanctioned triathlon. I may tell you a little bit about this, since it will be the first event. This will happen in the Gardner Acres Swim Club and Neighborhood, as well as the Gardner Park School. It will be for children, boys and girls aged seven to fourteen. They will compete the three-legged race, they will swim, they will transition to bike, they will transition to run. All different ages will have all different lengths of the event. Last year in the state of North Carolina, there were over forty-nine triathlons and aquathons, none in Gaston County. So, our hope is that this will be the first youth triathlon in Gaston County, and what is different about our youth triathlon is that we are capping our triathlon, let me back up, at a hundred and eighty participants, but fifty of those participants will.
But fifty of those participants will come to us from the YMCA summer program. These fifty children will be children that are scholarshiped. They are children in our public school system that are on free or reduced lunch. During the summer, the YMCA will train the children swimming, biking, and running. Through a grant that we have received from the community foundation, we will outfit these fifty children with bikes, bike helmet, sneakers, racing swimsuit, goggles, everything they need for the triathlon. And they will compete that day alongside of approximately a hundred and thirty actual youth triathletes. Our hope is twofold. A lot of these youth triathletes have never been to Gaston County, so we are inviting them to come, participate in our race, and see how wonderful Gaston County is. The other aspect of our race is teaching these fifty scholarship children the lifelong sport of triathlon. It is something that you don't just learn, you train for. And it gives you a lifelong avenue to learn. You might not succeed at first, you might fall down, and we're hoping that having these children race alongside seasoned triathletes will inspire them to work in their life for not just a triathlon, but other things. So we are currently seeking other scholarship dollars, other grants, other sponsorships for this. Are there any questions? You'll have to excuse me, I'm very excited. Very giddy with excitement.
We didn't know that. Any questions of Heather? You, you give an excellent presentation. Yes, Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Fisher.
Heather, when is this, in September?
September fourteenth. It's a Sunday afternoon.
Okay. And you spoke to the police and all and got everything worked out?
Yes. When we met with our, with Larry Wood for our questions, Sergeant McMurray was with us, and he gave out all of his information and was very comfortable with the road closures and has enough staff on the police to fulfill that day.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. No, he was just pointing.
Oh, he was pointing. The hundred and thirty?
Yes.
That are seasoned. Where all do they come from? Are they just North Carolina?
No, they'll come from North Carolina, they'll come from South Carolina. Now, there will also be some children in our community who will participate. We are going to have a T-shirt design contest within our schools to design the T-shirt. And we hope that by sending out that information, that we'll get children from our schools who might have never done a triathlon before, say, hey, you know, I can run, so I'm gonna do this too. So we'll have people from our area, we'll have people from North Carolina. A lot of people in South Carolina will come up and participate in the North Carolina races. I have a son who is involved in triathlons, and we travel around, and there's normally people from, some people as far away as Georgia come.
Okay, the people from South Carolina and other areas of North Carolina, will they be here, since this is a Sunday race, will they be here for the whole weekend?
The majority would come on a Saturday afternoon.
Okay, okay. So that would put them one night in a hotel?
Yes.
Heads on beds. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Do you notify the folks along the, that live along those streets that their street will be closed?
Yes, we do.
Door to door?
We have gone, we have gone door to door. A large majority, we have spoken with and have had very positive feedback. We are also going to host an event at the church a few weeks prior. And inviting them to come, a covenant Baptist, and inviting them to come out so we can answer any questions. We'll also do a blackboard a day or two before, reminding them that the road's closed, and we'll also do signage.
Yes, sir.
This type of youth triathlon, obviously, there's a standard, you know, run part, swim part, and bike part. So what are those distances in each of those cases?
May I call upon my race director?
Sure.
Mr. Redmond? I have a very large support staff.
Yes, you do.
Our exec committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name.
Shane Redmond. So the seven and eights swim will be fifty meters, bike will be one mile, runs half mile. Nine-ten is seventy-five meters swim, bike is one mile, run is three-quarters mile. Eleven-twelve will be a hundred meter swim, a two-mile bike and a one-mile run. Thirteen and fourteen will be a hundred and fifty meter swim, two-mile bike and one-mile run. And we're going to use, we've got permission from Gardner Park Elementary, we're gonna use the track as our run venue. So the only thing that we will use the loop for is the bike around Imperial and those streets.
So these will be staged kind of in heats then by age?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Age, age and gender.
Age and gender.
Age and gender. Okay, great, great. It's exciting.
I have one other. You said you were still looking for grants?
We are.
Have you contacted the county travel and tourism?
No, we have not. We will add that to our list. Thank you for the recommendation. We're, we're, anybody and everybody, we're gonna contact and knock on doors.
And they?
Well, as long as you put heads on beds, then, then?
That's the key phrase, correct?
That's, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's the first.
We have heads on beds. You give us money.
Excellent point.
You, you, you got a good event going.
Thank you. And it's gonna be a nationally sanctioned event.
And that's important.
So that's, that's, that's huge. And the closest one right now is in Huntersville, so.
Part of that, the covenant Baptist that you asked about is across the street, what was, at one time, St. Andrews.
Oh, yeah.
So it's rock throwing distance over there. Mr. Gallagher?
Just one question. The timeframe, is it gonna be from like two o'clock to?
Two to six.
Two to six? Okay. And anyone could come there and, and watch and enjoy?
We are going to love. Any volunteers? We, of course, and we are gonna have an expo area set up in the parking lot, back parking lot of the school, too, to allow our sponsorship people to come out and hand out information. We also have some kids' fun area and some things like that, too. So we do hope that it's a big day event for the city of Gaston.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Michael can tell you that I, I, I can, I grew at least three beards at swim meets, and that's just swim meets. That's not the other, rest of it. Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Dixon, you are getting all these people to practice by helping with the, the event that's coming up on May seventeenth, right?
Yes, that's right.
The Caramont Health Challenge, right? They're all gonna go?
She's very aware of it.
They're all gonna go practice.
I'm, I'm very, very well tied to, tied to Caramont, so.
Okay. And I gotta say, they make us look good. They are so detail oriented. It, it's gonna be a great event. I hope it's just the first of many.
We hope so, too.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All five, very much. Thank you. Okay. Michael looks old with all those little kids there, huh? Yeah, a little bit, yeah, okay. Now we're at the consent agenda, still daylight. There's, on the consent agenda, there's, there's only fourteen items.
Mr. Reed, do we do public expression?
No, we have not.
Well, I, the reason I skipped over that.
Let's just, just as Paul, then to make sure.
Is, is I forgot. I was looking, that, that is, now, that's the truth, and I'm sticking with it. Under the sign-up sheet, the reason I forgot is because there are four, to my knowledge, four people that signed up to speak, and I watched three of them leave. So is there anyone here that? Carol Simmons, Nan Curlin, Cindy Byer, and Glenn Silverman. Okay? Ms. Simmons, Mr. Simmons, that, that he asked a question, so, okay. Thank you, though, for telling, asking. The consent, consent agenda is fourteen items. Are there any that, anyone has questions on, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor? And there's Elvira Lane again, Ed. Yep. Good to have it. It's still Elvira Lane. I like that. Okay. That's down through item fifteen is a public hearing on the confirmation of the assessment role and levying assessments for water line extension for Woodhurst Court in accordance with section fourteen dash one forty-four B one of the Gastonia Code of Ordinances inside the corporate limits. The presentation is by Mr. Rusty Boss from City Engineer.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. The public hearing tonight is the final step in which we, utility services extended by petition, and assessments are used to pay portions of the cost of those extensions. The project is to, this project is to extend water on Woodhurst, Woodhurst Court. The project is about three hundred and twenty feet of two-inch water line that served five properties. The petition was signed by three residents. All three of those residents have tied on to service. The line is in place, it's in service, and, and those residents are receiving the service right now. At the last, at the April first regularly scheduled meeting, council adopted it, and I'm gonna read this straight from the, because there's no way I'll ever remember it. They adopted a resolution declaring cost, ordering preparation of the preliminary assessment role, and setting the public hearing for tonight to hear public comment from any interested parties. Notices of the preparation of the preliminary assessment role were sent, in this public hearing, were sent out to the affected residents. There, there is one copy paste correction that needs to be made on the agenda, on the resolution that's in your agenda, on the size of the line. The resolution calls for an eight-inch line. It was actually a two-inch line. It was just a, a minor typo that we let get by. After any public comment from the, the public hearing, staff recommends adoption of the resolution confirming the assessment role, and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have on this project.
Help me out again. What did you just say about the?
The?
So many answers versus, versus what?
I, I'm sorry.
The, the inch line?
The, the resolution in your agenda item?
Yeah.
This is on page fifteen dash three. So this is the resolution where you actually levy, levy the assessment?
Yes.
The description of the project is to construct an eight-inch line, is written in the agenda on that resolution. It's actually a two-inch line that was constructed.
It's a typo.
Okay. I, I was looking at the next page, which is two-inch.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. I see it.
A, a two-inch line was put.
Everyone get that?
That's what's there now.
Fifteen, three? Okay. Two-inch line. Here's the difference. Okay. Questions?
Rusty, why did the other two residents?
Um, one of the residents, well, was still fine. He just didn't wanna take service. The other one, I believe the other one, yeah, I, I think.
That would explain a lot. It looks like a full closure.
Essentially, nobody living.
That would explain a lot.
Any other questions?
I move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Close the public hearing, too.
Is that a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
You wanna make that part of your motion?
Yeah. I'll just withdraw my motion, start over.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Ed, this is probably a foolish question, but Walt's gone, isn't he?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. He couldn't hear us anyway.
Correct. Okay.
It's true.
If we may, let's skip item sixteen and come back to it in just a few minutes and go to, on over to the item eighteen, budget amendment fiscal year fourteen dash oh thirty, seven thousand dollars, police foundation donation of seven thousand dollars to the Gastonia Police Department for the purchase of tourniquets. Mr. Chuck Niemeyer, the police foundation representative, bow tie on there.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, lady and gentleman.
Glad to have you.
Um, I represent the police foundation, and we're local community leaders, professionals. I have several ties to the police department. In fact, I'm actually serve as a medical liaison for the SWAT team and additionally in practice orthopedics here in town. I also served in combat in Iraq in two thousand and three, so I have firsthand, hand knowledge of the use of a tourniquet. Tourniquets in the past had been shunned because of some damage, but there's been a lot of research lately, particularly in two thousand and four. The Department of Medicine at Walter Reed studied a lot of combat-related injuries, particularly penetrating traumas as well as roadside bombs. And they found that exsanguination occurred, which means bleeding, losing all your blood, in one out of ten soldiers, sailors, marines, that, and airmen that were in country that were injured. So we are honored to present tourniquets to the City of Gastonia Police. Captain Britton is right here. In fact, as I understand, in the Boston bombing a year ago, several of these were used to save lives. And I think our law enforcement, men and women, if properly trained, can not only save themselves, but also our citizens, should they receive any like trauma. So I'm honored to present this.
Cap?
Any questions?
Questions of Chuck?
I'll make a comment.
Travis?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
I appreciate Chuck, you being a volunteer like yours, like your, your mother, Carolyn, your daddy Charles, a big volunteer, saw the picture in the paper recently. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Any motion to approve the amendment?
If you'd like.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes, ma'am. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item eighteen. Item nineteen is the service contract renewal for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, route eighty-five X of the Gastonia Express Regional Transit Service, eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. The presentation by Mr. Hank Graham, Principal Transportation Planner. Hank?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
This is our regular annual contract to continue the annual operation of our eighty-five X Gastonia Express bus route from downtown Gastonia to downtown Charlotte. This year, unfortunately, again, we received the contract a little late from the Charlotte Area Transit System, and I guess when we preliminarily began preparing our budget, we had not received the contract. So we find that the costs did go up, they did increase a little bit. We actually input or placed in the budget the same dollar amount that we had last fiscal year, and we found that we needed to add, add a slightly small amount to the budget in order to cover this. But average annual cost increases would include fuel price increases and a little bit of ridership. We still do have ridership kind of remaining level. It's not a major increase. I imagine we'll see another spike, a small spike, if we find that gas prices this summer do go up above four dollars a gallon as they have been proposed or expected to do. But we did have a large amount of positions or employees that did not commute to Charlotte every day, so that's why the ridership numbers have remained stable or steady and not increased or decreased. But this is the contract, it's for a total amount of eighty-one thousand and change, and we are still being subsidized by the City of Belmont for five thousand dollars a year. We did finalize an annual contract where they committed to provide that five thousand dollars on an annual basis as long as the route is, is operating. Did make another request to Gaston County, they have not chosen to participate financially. And we even asked for an increase in the five thousand dollar annual allocation from Belmont, and they chose just to leave the dollar amount the same, so.
Dr. Curling?
Who sets the fares?
The Charlotte Area Transit System does, because the buses are being provided by their overall bus system. And it's based on the contract, I guess the operators are Charlotte Area Transit System operators. Their fares, their salaries, the fuel, you know. Maybe if we were to actually provide the operators, provide the fuel, maybe our prices would be slightly different, I don't know. But we enter into the annual contractual obligation with CATS, and we pay for half of the service. But, you know, maybe if our overhead and our costs were a little lower, maybe we could enjoy some decreases in the operating cost of the, of the route, I don't, I don't know.
I was wondering if the fares were uniform throughout the system?
Yes, they are, for all of the express bus routes that you are talking about outside of Charlotte. We have one in Rock Hill, one to East Lincoln, one up in Moore's Hill, yes, they are.
And the only reason I ask that is because, you know, right now Gastonia is subsidizing, you know, Gaston County residents, or non-residents of Gastonia. And I'm really tired of it. And it sounds like we have no redress to that, however, it's certainly not fair. And I know you've solicited the other municipalities of the county, as well as the county in the past. And I don't know if there's any other form of relief that we can receive from anyone to help subsidize this increasing cost that Gastonia continues to bear, where other residents of the county are receiving those benefits. But it does not make good economic sense for the citizens of Gastonia to continue to have to shoulder this burden. And I don't know how to fix it, but I sure wish somebody in this room could come up with an idea.
Well, from a staff perspective, I'd, I'd like to say, we have not asked before. The MPO, we did grow this year, we expanded into three counties. But we are still considered a small-sized MPO, so there are certain transportation efforts that we are not mandated to participate in, which would be transportation management association activities, where we actually would be required to partner with private industry to provide transportation improvement programs. We can, just because we're not, I, I'd say that I, as staff, have not approached our private sector employers to request their participation in a program like this. But that is an option that we do have.
Ms. Craig?
Has the county ever participated?
Not with the eighty-five X.
Right.
Route, but they've participated in some other regional transportation planning activity.
Well, I mean, and I just piggyback on what Councilman Curling was saying, is that each year, the City of Gastonia absorbs that additional cost. And I'm sure that it isn't just City of Gastonia residents that are using the eighty-five X. So my, I guess my question is, has the county, since we've had the eighty-five X bus line, has the county ever, okay, I, and, and I, I certainly feel the same way, is that, that the City of Gastonia always kind of steps up to the plate and bears that burden. And Belmont doing the five thousand, that's, that's, that's something. But it services all of Gaston County citizens. So I, I would like to see us also pursue some other way. I don't have an answer either, but there could be something.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Hank, two things. One, there was an increase of five thousand five hundred dollars from CATS, is that it?
Yes.
And Belmont's paying the same amount?
They're paying the same.
They're paying, they paid five thousand last year, they're paying five thousand this year, and they didn't get like ten or twenty percent of this increase that was dropped on us?
It was provided to them, we were, we, we informed them of such, and they declined to increase their annual allocation.
That doesn't sound right, I mean, if CATS is dropping it on us, they need to drop it on them as well.
Our contract, I'm sorry, let me explain. The contract between CATS and the City of Gastonia is simply that, between the City of Charlotte and the City of Gastonia. The contract of, with Belmont is with the City of Gastonia. They are doing this as, on a voluntary, voluntary basis.
Yeah, but if, we should just say, the voluntary basis is now, you know, if you want the bus to stop there, it's costing five thousand dollars. Well, now it's five thousand five hundred dollars, because we're getting hit from CATS. The other thing is, I'd love to see a noonday bus. I mean, it just makes sense of, you know, the buses only run from five fifteen in the morning until seven twenty in the morning, and then the buses don't start up until four o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, if you, if you're working half a day, you can't get back. And there's a lot of people that would like to go a half-day route if they wanted to. Have we investigated that at all with CATS?
We did, they provided us the cost of providing a noonday bus route, it's very expensive. I think in order for us to enter into that agreement, CATS does not wish to provide a noonday bus route on top of the existing agreement here. If the City of Gastonia wished to provide that, we would have to pay a hundred percent of that additional cost.
I can understand that, but we have four buses in the morning, and four buses in the afternoon. Can we take one bus away, like in the morning, and have a noonday bus? And I mean, it's the same amount of buses, eight.
We looked at that, that is a lowering of the level of service that all of the existing riders have enjoyed for the thirteen years of the route's history.
Can we solicit the riders that are doing that, and ask them how, what their preference would be?
We can do that.
To find out which, which one of the routes they'd like to, to cut out in order to have a noonday bus?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a one-year contract extension, correct?
Yes, I think historically, we were doing three-year, we all do one-year contract with a three-year renewal. Just if something happened, you know, say for example, gas prices went to seven dollars a gallon, and we, we wanted out, we didn't want to renew it again, and needed to start over from scratch. You know, some unique event or current.
So currently, what's the percentage of ridership that is from Gastonia?
I think it was twenty, between twenty and twenty-five percent. I mean, we had some riders, there was one rider from the last survey, which we did last year.
Right.
We updated it. We had some riders from York County and Cleveland County as well.
Mm-hmm.
Those are some other local governments, but, I mean, the frequency was very low.
Right.
Yeah.
So how much notice do we have to give them to cancel the contract?
I think it's typical, what?
Sixty days, or?
Sixty day, sixty day, no, sixty day to cancel.
So, if we were to publicly make aware the fact that Gastonia was not going to continue to pay this every more, every, every year, and threaten to cancel the contract if we didn't get participation from the county, do you think that would get their ear?
It, it would send a message, I don't, I don't know, I can't, can't speak.
If you have twenty-five percent ridership from Gastonia approximately, okay, and we're subsidizing seventy-five percent of the ridership.
Right.
It's time to do something different, so I think that's something to think about.
It's more than seventy-five percent, isn't it, that we're subsidizing?
Hank.
Allez, allez.
Question, I know you said you did a survey as to, of the people that were riding, where they're from, in, outside of Gastonia, but within Gaston County, what percentage would that be?
Oh, definitely within Gaston County, it was above ninety percent. I mean, the Cleveland County and the York County that I mentioned, they, they probably didn't even represent five percent.
Right, but, but outside of the City of Gastonia?
Yeah, it would be forty-five, fifty percent of the remaining.
So they, yeah.
Yeah, you are, you are carrying the load, you are carrying around ninety percent of the load.
We need to let the commissioners know that.
I think those riders will let the commissioners know when we give notice that, you know, we're thinking of canceling the contract.
Right.
Okay.
Something to think about in the next twelve months, folks.
No, I, I, I definitely agree with Councilman Curling that, and, and I think we had this discussion somewhat last year, at the same-
We have it every year.
Every year.
So-
I'm tired of having it.
But if we keep having it, we just heard Hank say that no one's going to look into, talk into private industry. Why have alternatives not been sought out and researched? If we have the same discussion every year, and the council says that they're not happy with it every year, why have there been no alternatives proposed?
All the other alternatives have always involved governments. And this conversation that Hank, or the suggestion that, you know, maybe someone like Bank of America or something like that might kick into that, I mean, that's something that we could pursue. But I think all our other discussions have always been to try to get Mount Holly, the county, and, and governments involved.
But he, he just said we could also look for Gastonia to look at providing the service to a private contractor. I mean, just because we're putting people on a bus to take them to Charlotte, doesn't mean it has to be through CATS, correct?
Oh, it doesn't have to be CATS, someone has to pay for it, though.
Correct, but, but if we could get a private contractor to come in for less, and we still have Belmont's input, we get the county to do input, that's just less for us.
And just have, just-
It's a savings regardless.
Let only Gastonia residents ride if we're responsible.
Well, that's why I was asking about the rates, because if there was a differential, I'd suggest that there'd be a differential in the rate between a Gastonia resident and a non-Gastonia resident. Charge the non-Gastonia resident twice as much.
Well, it's kind of like charging, if you're in the city, this is what you pay at the Shield Museum.
Exactly, exactly, that's, that's why I was asking those questions.
Exactly.
Because I, I'm just really tired of it. And I would give, I would charge, you know, Hank and his staff, within four to six months, they have, you know, researched all the private, you know, funding available through corporate, you know, sponsorship, whatever, and if in six months, there's been none of that available, then we look at this again and see what we're gonna do. But I'm just tired of it.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
One question, the total cost to the city for our contract with CATS, is it thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, it's, of that total dollar amount, the eighty, is it eighty-one?
Yeah.
Eighty-one and change.
Right. It boils down to-
Yes, split that in half.
So thirty-five thousand for having four buses a day, eight buses, really.
Correct.
A day, coming back and forth from Charlotte, that's pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, it's pretty cheap.
For a year.
The overall, I think the overall annual-
I understand where you're coming from, Dave, I really would like to see the county step up, I, I totally-
Well, let's get some strategies together to figure out how to get the county to step up then.
That's an excellent idea.
The only other idea that I could come up with, we could allocate our CMAC funding or congestion mitigation for equality funding to this program.
Now-
Well, why don't we do that?
By us?
We've used it for other projects, but-
But in the future, if we budgeted in next year's budget.
If we have-
Because that's obviously an excellent, you know, source, as well as excellent utilization of those funds.
And for a transit system or transit project like this, the local match is ten percent, not twenty.
Well, let's, let's look at all the options, and please report back to us in a timely fashion.
And Hank, we get some type of credits because we're doing this bus thing through MPO, or?
Well, I think-
Keep America Beautiful, or some group?
It helps us with our ozone non-conforming requirements and reporting to the federal government to have transit.
Because we have to have so much mass transit.
Correct.
A city of our size.
It helps us pass conformity.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Don't, don't we need to vote to approve this?
And get the motion?
I, I guess we're kind of stuck at this point to approve it for at least one more year, because we can't just pull the bus out from under the riders, so to speak.
You approve the contract, renewal?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, any more? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, well, we, we hear the direction of the council on this item. This item used to be on the consent agenda all the time, and the council every year would take it off. So this time, we said, we'll just put it on the, here, and let's discuss it. Because there've been a couple new wrinkles by variation of, of fares. We could talk about that, and we'll try to explore all these alternatives, and come back to the council within, you know, maybe around September or something like that, so that we can then make a decision as to where we're headed.
Item twenty is the wholesale electric rate discussion, Director of Enterprise Services, Paul Jakubzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Item twenty.
I pulled out all my sheets here to get through this nice and simplistic discussion for, for which you guys had asked a discussion on from last meeting. The, the first spreadsheet that you have in your packet today, exhibit twenty dash two, is the same spreadsheet that Mr. Gallagher had presented to you guys last month from the Board of Directors Meeting from Electric Cities. What I like to do is, is let you know that this spreadsheet here was actually put together and done for contractual purposes when the agency purchased into the Catawba Plant. Every utility had to talk about the percentage that they wanted to buy into it, and they based it on the load at that particular time. The agency, Electric Cities, has never billed based on these numbers. So these numbers are just for contractual purposes only. The second sheet that you have, which is twenty dash three, just gives you an understanding of where we're at with the rate disparity, which is basically the difference between the top payer and the bottom payer based on an average cost per kiloatt hour. This is based on two thousand and thirteen actual numbers. And as you can see, the City of Lexington is paying almost ten cents a kiloatt hour, where the City of Huntersville is paying about five cents a kiloatt hour. As you see, there's about a fifty percent disparity right there. And in two thousand and twelve, we tried to fix that through our rate committee and the Board of Commissioners and Board of Directors. If you turn, and we'll go, get to page twenty dash four next, but if you look at twenty dash five, the plan that we put in place in two thousand and fourteen, or in two thousand and twelve, takes the disparity that you see in the two thousand and eleven, and brings you down in two thousand and twenty to where everyone is plus or minus five to ten percent, instead of that fifty percent differential, you're getting closer to the ten to twenty percent, which is more doable for a lot of the cities. Page, exhibit twenty dash four is a rearranged chart from the actual numbers that were presented for two thousand and thirteen. What, what this chart shows is the way that we currently bill, which is based on usage. And, and in this chart, if you just go look through there, the percent of the bill, we'll go through the first ones, what they actually paid for that entire year. The second one is the percent of what they paid of the total bill. The next one is an allocated demand, which is based on what they've used in previously, and we'll get into why this is changing. The second one, the next column is a percent of that allocated demand, based on what that total is, and then you get the differential. The main thing that you want to look at is this last column. If everyone was paying based on the same cost per kiloatt hour, you will see that the City of Gastonia itself has paid almost two million dollars more last year than it should have. It would be based everything on the same cost per kiloatt hour. And this is something that we're trying to alleviate, and in two thousand and twelve, we came up with a nine-year plan to be able to bring this wide disparity down to a reasonable number. Part of the reason that this is, came up, is this allocated demand, which is, is a number that they use in billing, has never been adjusted since the late nineties. As loads have gone up and gone down based on the recession and growth, they have never changed. And that's one of the reasons why you see the discrepancy between what everyone has been paying. And what we're actually looking at doing is doing that allocated demand over a three-year rolling average to make sure that everything gets done and, and adjusted. If you have a good year, you get adjusted the next year, if you have a bad year, it gets adjusted the other way the following year. I know this is a very simplistic version of a very complex item, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have on this. More or less, this was council-driven from the last meeting, and just to answer some of the questions that you may have.
Question?
Mr. Mayor, just the, the other item, exhibit twenty dash six, shows a chart how each of the cities would true themselves up along the lines that Mr. Jakubzak was discussing. And if you notice, the highlighted one shows that Gastonia will be indeed in a very favorable position ultimately. But some of the other cities, such as Huntersville, they're not, not so much. They're actually going to be going the other, other way. And therein lies the conflict, and therein lies the debate within Electric Cities. And there are certain cities like Monroe and Huntersville that would much like to slow this down and not do this. And you can understand why, it's going to cost them more money. But for us, we feel it's a matter of equity, and it needs to be done because a person that lives in a home in Gastonia or a person that lives in a home in Huntersville should essentially pay the same electric rate. We're all in it together with our percentages of the Catawba Nuclear Plant and Electric Cities. So we believe that the decision in two thousand and twelve to move toward more of a common rate was the right way to go. This last year, they did it for one year. And then this last year, what's happened is the Electric City has, the organization has recommended to slow that down, to assist those other cities and not give us as much benefit. So that's why we are pressing, along with Lexington and others, to try to develop this equity. There are winners and losers, and you can imagine that everybody's split based upon pretty much their own position. So that's the essential debate and discussion. We're going to have a meeting on Thursday. It's a regional meeting that Electric Cities has that starts at six o'clock at the conference center. And they're going to talk about a lot of other things. And I don't know that they're really going to get down to the hard part of this. They probably won't. This discussion of wholesale rates actually is somewhere around from January to March. It's around January or so. January is when the decisions are made about where we're going. One of the things that we wanted to talk to them about prior to the meeting, just Gastonia, is we don't understand why they left the nine-year plan. Why this last year, they decided to go back. And we would like to discuss that directly with those folks at five o'clock ahead of time. I don't think all the council needs to be there. I think our Electric Cities representatives certainly. But we need to hone in on this and then work between now and next year with our other members. And we have meetings with our other cities to try to move back towards more equity in our electric rates.
Thank you. Question, yes, ma'am?
Who's on the rate committee from Gastonia?
Myself and Mr. Bomberdier.
Okay, and both of your voting members?
Each city, there is, if I remember looking through the thing, and this is something that they'll get into a little bit. I believe that there is fourteen or fifteen members on the rate committee out of nineteen cities. I believe it's, each city should have an opportunity to have a member. The structure is set up a little differently. This is a committee that is appointed by the Board of Directors, but works in the cities that they represent. And then this committee makes the recommendation to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors approves its recommendation, and the Board of Commissioners have the right to veto it if they so choose or just say, yes, that is good.
And it's just a recommending body.
The rate committee.
The rate committee. And the rate committee gets a recommendation from Electric Cities, the staff. They will produce a publication, and I think you get it on, what, Friday or Saturday of-
We normally get it about a week before, and this time, it was eighty-two slides to go over for the one presentation and forty on the other. We had about four days to go through it.
Yeah, so this is where they changed back. And it was from Electric Cities' organization, where they were recommending not to move along this nine-year schedule. So we tried to fight it as best we could, but we didn't have the votes. So what we're trying to do is work with Electric Cities itself as to, well, why are you recommending this as an organization? Seems like, oh, you're gonna do, it doesn't seem right. But we also want to talk with our other cities to try to work between now and next year to get this thing back towards more equitable rates among the cities. It's gonna, yes?
What happens if we just refuse to pay it? You said that this was done in two thousand and two?
In two thousand and twelve, we came up with a nine-year plan to get that rate disparity from a large gap to a smaller gap.
But the rate disparity started-
The rate disparity started back in the nineties, late nineties, when they changed the rate structure, and they never changed the demand allocated to each person.
So for twenty years, we've been paying everybody else's share, or a large part of their share. And now we're saying, well, please, can you make it a little more fair? If they're not, if they're not a big stick, we can pay?
Well, there's, see, there's been this debate. And it goes back to whenever everybody had their share at that moment in the seventies. You just take a camera click, and that's where it is. Well, Huntersville was just a small town there. You know, I'm not even sure if seventy-seven was through. You know, it was right about then, they finally connected seventy-seven. So Huntersville grew, I mean, it became greater Charlotte, boom. So its percentage exploded. You know, we lost our textile industry. Lexington, some other cities had some declines. So while we were all paying the proper percentage initially, soon we got all out of line. Now, there were periods of time when we had excess electricity, and we could sell it on the market and make money. And so when we were making money like that, actually, it was washing back, and there wasn't as much of a discrepancy. But now, after the recession, there wasn't that opportunity to sell it on the open market, so we had to absorb it. And so the way they've done it is they've done it according to that old formula, which really puts us in a wrong position. So by two thousand and twelve, we did get the majority of everybody with Electric Cities to agree that that's not right and to make the change. So we were, that we were doing it gradually, and then they stopped and moved back. So that's where the heartburn, I mean, that's the city's concern. And that's why we want to start this, because we don't think, we don't think it's fair. But we, you know, and that's, and I believe Councilman Gallagher expressed it at the board. I mean, we've expressed it before, but we, you got, I voted too, right?
Totally.
Yeah.
The cities that don't want to do it are definitely Huntersville, Monroe, High Point. The ones that are on our camp are like Lexington. Those are the ones with us. And Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but Exhibit twenty-six, are we looking at, in two thousand and fifteen, a rate increase of five point three?
That's what's projected right now. And some of that has to do with, they're looking at a five percent wholesale, but then you also have an increase in supplemental power, which is another portion of the entire rate structure.
And then, it looks like everyone's going to get like a five percent. And then all of a sudden, two thousand and sixteen, everything goes haywire. We get a three point seven. Huntersville's getting a thirteen percent increase? I find that hard to believe. And Cornelius is getting eight point nine? I find that-
Here is the way that the structure has been set up in two thousand and twelve, is that in order to alleviate these multiple double-digit increases per year, the first three years, first four years, we roughly did a two and a half percent increase, or two and a half percent change in the allocated demand. After that, we go with a ten percent change in the allocated demand over the other seven years, or six years that are remaining. That's where we get into that allocated demand change. And allocated demand change, if you want to look at it from this standpoint, if you want to just look at Huntersville. Huntersville, they got about two point eight megawatts worth of allocated demand, which they said that this is what we're going to pay in nineteen, in the late nineties, ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, somewhere in there. Right now, their load's probably close to steady state, probably anywhere from eight to twelve megawatts. And you have this discrepancy in the rates. You have a first block and a second block. And I know we're getting more complex as we talk. The first, first, the first demand block is at fifty dollars. They pay fifty dollars on that two point eight megawatts, and that's what they would have paid going across the board. The other ten megawatts that they use, they pay twelve dollars on. What we're trying to do is get that first demand block, that fifty-one-dollar charge, to be closer to the eight to nine megawatts over a nine-year period. So you just can't tomorrow, charge them twelve megawatts because you're going to see probably sixty percent increases, fifty percent increases. And when we went through, and Mr. Bomberdier can attest to this, we sat through eight months' worth of very interesting meetings, debates, trying to get to some type of resolution to where it was equitable for everyone. There was people, when we first started, that wanted to make that jump from the two to the eighth or two to the ten. But we said, now, that's not right to everyone. We need to protect everybody because we're in this as a group. That's where we came up with this nine-year staggered staged-in plan. And what Mr. Munn had talked about earlier is that this year, in two thousand and fourteen, July first, Electric Cities had presented and has been approved, a deviation from the plan that was approved. They're still doing the allocated demand, but the way they approach and put in the rate increases actually hurts Gastonia that it more would a Huntersville or a Monroe.
What happened? Why would Electric Cities adopt and approve a nine-year plan? And then, and I know the answer, but then all of a sudden, now that plan's not right. Okay? Did they not, did they take it back to the committee that worked so hard in trying to make it equitable and fair to everybody to say, we're going to go against this nine-year plan? All right, something changed drastically, it seems like, that would have happened.
The one thing that, and we have asked that question multiple times, and-
Why can't we get an answer?
The answer that we get is based on a marginal rate, that our marginal rates are getting too close to Duke's rates. So it's a cost competitive. What they're trying to do is make sure that our rates are not higher than what Duke's rates are on the margin. I don't understand why, why they're looking, comparing a wholesale rate to a retail rate. It's, but we have asked that question multiple times.
And you are about five times smarter than I am when it comes to all this kind of stuff. But I even understand what you were just telling me.
Yeah, they, I must have done good then.
Yeah, I understood that, okay? So that's why, why can't we get a direct answer? Because that, the answer you're getting, doesn't hold water.
And like I said, we have done that in multiple venues and multiple meetings, trying to get an answer as far as why we changed the plan. And the only thing that we get is the marginal rates, that we're getting not close enough to the marginal rates. And Councilman Gallagher-
Can we not get him to get us that answer?
Well, on Thursday, we're going to be having a major, you know, at five o'clock before that meeting, we're going to sit down in a room and say, hey, you know, just like what we're talking about here, constructively, but saying, why did you change? You know, and going into next year, are you not going to go back to the nine-year plan? What, you know, what's going on here? And I think that's really what we want to, now Monroe says, oh, I believe that, what they said, that we're getting a break. But they're-
Pulled out the first, the first page?
Yeah.
They pulled out this sheet saying Gastonia's not paying their fair share. Look at this. And he sent this over to me on my computer, and he was going, look, you guys are seven million dollars in the red. You're not paying, what, High Point's paying twenty-three million? You guys aren't owing up to your share.
They're-
And then I showed it to Paul, Paul goes, Jim, that's something that's old. That's something we don't even use.
Yeah.
So I would like everyone to come to the meeting.
Doesn't the city of Gastonia own proportionately-
Yes.
More than some of these other municipalities?
Yes, we do. Correct, we're the second largest. High Point is the largest.
High Point, we're the second.
We're second.
Okay. So should we not have a little bit more influence than we seem to have?
I mean, we believe that we should, and we have in the past. We've had people from Gastonia that have been board chairs. When Doug Dixon was there, he was board chair. Franz Holsher was involved. We've had a number of people from the city over the years. Mayor, I'm trying to remember if you were way back. We've had, and we've had pretty, in fact, High Point and Gastonia were pretty much in lockstep earlier. And we were very close with Shelby and some of the other cities. So one of the things, I think, we're surprised. I mean, I think the staff's surprised, just like the council is. And what we want to try to do is learn more, work within this organization to get it back to that two thousand and twelve program and get us back on track again. Pierce Hall?
Councilwoman Craig brought up part of my question. But this goes back to what I asked a minute ago that got us started on this, and no one still answered it. We've basically been getting screwed for twenty years on the rates. Why can we not take a bigger stick into those meetings? All I hear is, well, we're going to ask, and we're going to try. There's got to be, and I don't know if it's a legal solution, I don't know what it is, but we can't keep carrying the load for everybody else just because they don't want a rate increase. Our customers have been paying this rate for however many years now. It's time for their customers to step up the plate. It's kind of like what Dr. Curran was saying with the bus rider. Gastonia's not going to keep paying the way for these others. And if they're not going to step up to the plate, we need to have an option, be it legal, whatever, to say, we're not doing it anymore. We're not. Not, will you please work with us? We're not doing it. There's got to be that option.
I believe we should press as hard as we possibly can and get our votes and try to make sure we win the day. Absolutely. The other side will say, we're the ones that are growing. If it wasn't for us, you would be in deeper trouble. And that, you cities that did not grow, we're the ones that have helped you along the way. And we will say, well, no, you, you know, we're the ones that reserved all of this electricity that's allowed you to grow. You should pay the going rate, not some subsidized rate. And that's the, and so, Paul, you said in two thousand and twelve that you were all having months of this argument till you finally got to the nine-year plan. And you can hear, I mean, you can just imagine, I can imagine where, you know, and so we got to where we should be, and they implemented it then for two thousand and thirteen. So we thought we were okay. But then this year, we went back the other way. And so that's, that's what's caused this most recent, see, we thought we hammered it out. We thought we had fixed it.
And actually, yeah. Councilman Pierce Hall, I haven't been involved in this very closely, but you know, this is right now, an issue of coalition building. You got to find enough votes on that board to get the rate passed that is equitable for your citizens. The contracts that created the power agency and Electric Cities are, I mean, they're the most Byzantine things you've ever seen in your life. They're this thick, they're thirty years old, and everyone agreed and gave away their firstborn trial that they're going to be part of this compact for a long time. So you just can't go in and say, I own, you know, seventeen percent of the nuclear reactor. I'm not going to do this anymore because you signed these contracts. And so the way that the rules work is you got to have a majority of votes on that board. You can't, you can't just pull out. Okay, so Councilman Gallagher, get with some of these other cities.
Working on it.
And just tell them, let's all go in there and vote to pay zero and make High Point pay it off.
No, it's really-
You got a majority vote, you can do that, right?
We just want them to stick to the nine-year plan. That's the whole thing, but these guys-
If they won't stick to the nine-year plan-
Because if they stick to the nine-year plan, we're all fine with it. But we're afraid that come two thousand and sixteen, this plan is going to shift because thirteen percent of Huntersville and eight percent Cornelius and Monroe, seven point three. Those, those are the ones, you know, we have to build a coalition starting now.
Well, it doesn't sound like that worked if it's changing.
Then the next step was, we wanted, Electric Cities' organization, the employees of it, you know, implemented the nine-year plan. And they did because that was what the recommendation was in two thousand and twelve. And then this year, they, the staff recommended something different. And sure enough, the votes were there and went that way. We're, we're going to be talking directly with the staff about what they're doing and where they're going next year. And can they promise us they're not going to do that? And where we, you know, so we're going to try to get some information. We're going to try to see, like on Thursday, specifically there. But the idea of getting the other cities, a majority of the other cities, that's the work that we will need to do now so that we don't find ourselves in this situation next year. Because it was a surprise, wasn't it, Paul?
When we got to the-
We didn't, in March, it just came out of, we thought we were doing another year of the nine-year plan. And so we thought we had already fixed the problem. And so it came as a great surprise to us.
Listen, I want to bring something up that's along the same subject, a little bit different. And I discussed it with Dr. Curran earlier. And I've discussed with this Ed Munn, I'm the delegate to the power agency. And this stuff gets more- And this stuff gets more complicated all the time. These guys know what's going on and he's learning. What I would like to do is give up my delegate to the power agency and give it to Ed and get you to appoint Ed Munn in my place as a delegate, because he's so much, he's been here for all these years and knows so much more about it. Would, would the council go along with me in doing that and let me give up my delegate to the power agency and let, and then appoint Ed Munn in that position? Because he's so much more qualified for it. He just knows so much better. So right now, I'm asking, I'm saying I'm gonna step down as a delegate. If you'd let me right now move that Ed Munn, take my position. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Mayor?
Ash, what do you think? I mean, well-
Is there any requirement that that delegate be an elected official? I mean, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't think there is.
No requirement. Now, see, Strebe Boynton is president of, is the chairman of the power agency.
He's a, he's a city manager.
Yeah, city manager, and then you got-
That answers your question.
If Mr. McHattier's making a motion to appoint Mr. Munn in his head, it's, it's for-
Does he need to resign first?
No, I think once the, if the vote passes, it will effectively replace.
Okay.
Who is the alternate, alternate?
This gentleman right here.
Are you still the alternate? So we don't have an alternate?
There's actually, the way that the structure works is every city gets a commissioner and then up to two alternates. Mr. McHattier is the appointed commissioner for the city of Gastonia. Mr. Gallagher is the first alternate, I'm the second alternate.
So I think Ed would be much more knowledgeable in representing us on that.
I second Porter's motion.
You did too.
Oh, he's seconded it?
Yep.
Is this okay with you, Mr. Munn?
Yes, and if we could have the alternates, you know, the alternates, then be Paul Jacobzak and flip Bomadere. And it will make sure we have, you know. And just in case, you know, but I, but I will intend, yeah, I will go to the meeting.
With you to, since you're on-
Unless you wanna be an alternate.
No, no, I don't. Let's just let Mr. Bomadere have your alternate position. And I'll move that, put that in my motion.
All right, everybody notice the motion, there's a second motion.
Second.
And, yep, Dr. Curran, that Porter's resigning as the delegate. And in his place will be the city manager and the alternate will be Mr. Bomadere.
And Mr.- Jim's resigning as the alternate.
Resigning as the alternate. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
I can feel so much relief.
Very quickly, let me say, and don't-
It's complicated.
Talking to Porter, but he's talking.
I'm sorry.
I said, let me say to, primarily to you, that I can't remember what happened yesterday, but I remember in either nineteen seventy-five or nineteen seventy-seven, when we were babies, in this very room, Bonham Carter was sitting right over there, and he says, why do we have to get into this power agency? Why do we have to do that? And there was this young man at the back of the room named Munn. Had hair. And he said-
Had hair.
And he said, we don't have to get into it. But he said, you know, a lot of people, if they wanna turn, go turn a switch on in the morning and the lights come on, we need to be in it. And you said that. Yes, you did, don't say that.
I think that was Sam Wilkins, you know.
No, it was you. But that, anyway, that's, I'm glad you did.
I'm sure that, that you guys will do what you can for us. I think I just expressed Councilwoman Craig's sentiments and mine, and Dr. Curran was shaking his head, and I know Jim. It just seems like there's more that we could be doing. I understand building a coalition, I understand that. And you have to kinda soothe some egos and budgets and all this kinda stuff. But it just seems like we can do a little bit more because we can't continue to say, we just didn't have the votes. That, you can only do that for so long.
Todd, and everyone, come Thursday at five o'clock.
Exactly.
Because that is the perfect time to speak to these people about these rates and to bring everything to bear on.
If I can interject with, with what you had requested, Mr. Pierce Hall. We, when we got this on a Thursday, by Wednesday before the rate committee meeting, we had spoken to at least a half a dozen agency members and explained to them why this wasn't the right thing to do. And at that time, we had the understanding that those six members, of which we won't name names, but they were the larger members, were gonna be voting against the recommendation and go back with the original recommendation. And for whatever reason, and we have yet to find out what that reason was, that they changed their vote at the meeting.
So, so at that point in time, is, is that where we need to get on the phone with some other elected officials in those cities?
I think we need to do everything we can to, to build our coalition. And for instance, Chair Evil is, is one here. And that's an easy one, and we know Mr. Hovis. I think Mr. Hovis probably would vote with us and Chair Evil would vote with us. We need to make sure that that's okay. Shelby, I think the same way. But, but yes, it, it may be that the person, that the key person is someone actually on city council who knows someone, or the mayor, or, you know, the manager. We, we will try to work to whatever our connections are to get ourselves back right again. That's really what we have to focus.
Well, I just look at it, if the shoe were on the other foot and we were the one that getting this incredible deal for all these years.
Yeah.
I wouldn't just say, here, have it, you know, take it away from me. But I, I would like to think that I would look at this situation and say, yeah, we've had it good for a long time, we need to start at least paying our fair share.
And let's do a nine-year crampeen like we're supposed to. You, you're right. That's what they did in two thousand and-
I find it hard to believe that these other municipalities are like, stick at the Gastonia, we don't care. Anyway, that's, I've, I've been on my soapbox still, I'm sorry.
We had two votes. That was it. That's what it came down to.
Are you serious?
Amazing.
Paul, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your help there.
I'm glad you know so much.
Five times more than you do. Is, Ed, would you like to go? We have eighteen, um, excuse me, sixteen and twenty-one, which twenty-one's a citizen appointments, committee appointments. But you wanna go back and hit on item sixteen, the public hearing actually for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget?
Uh, yes, sir.
Let me hear and be open.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the purpose of this item is, it, it states in the general statutes, you have to have a public hearing on your budget. You have to give the opportunity for citizens to comment. So this is the official opportunity for citizens to comment. Traditional that city manager at the same time just gives a general sketch as to what is involved with the budget. We had a budget hearing not too long ago, but we're going to, or a preliminary budget meeting. Our next budget meeting is on May the fourteenth, and then that's at five thirty. And so that is where we're gonna be doing our hard work. What I'll do is just very briefly, I will not go through all of this, but just very briefly discuss the budget, the, the outline, and then if there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment, we could give them that opportunity. Basically, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget, which has been given to you, I think it was on April twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. We've also advertised this public hearing, provided the copy here at City Hall at the library, so it's available for public viewing. I wanted to thank the city employees and particularly the Budget Office and Finance Department for putting this together. There are no programs eliminated, but we talked about this before. The size of the budget is two hundred and twelve million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And it sounds big. One of the big, the biggest single item is electricity. Electricity in, electricity out, makes it look like a bigger budget than it really is. And, and I'm going from the exhibit here. Our three principles going through this are financial responsibility, customer service, and economic development. We talked about the budget objectives that we have. The first item, which on, on exhibit sixteen-three, talking about the general fund. General fund, at the end of that first paragraph, it's gonna continue to be our, an area of stress. That is where most of our employees are, almost sixty percent of our employee, sixty percent of costs in that particular fund have to do with, with personnel. We talked about the thermometers and how the thermometers really worked and showed that there's maybe three million dollars worth of effort that needs to do to get the balance. We've been able to do that. And so what we are doing though, we are using fund balance to balance the general fund. But we're doing it in a very measured way. We're doing, we're spending seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars to balance the general fund. Now, later on, you'll see that we're spending six hundred and forty-nine thousand to balance the other fund that has, that, that has trouble, which is our health insurance fund. So together, it's one million, three, seventy-one, nine, sixty-one. So a million and three from the general fund balance to get things right. Now, later, we'll get some relief when the debt service comes down. But for now, we're doing that and we feel like we can do that effectively and we're not, because our, our, our fund balance is well beyond our, our minimum between twelve and fifteen percent. The, there's some information that's still coming into us. For instance, your commercial values, we won't get that till probably later on this week or next week. And so we'll, by the time we meet on the fourteenth, we may have some new numbers there. The amount of dollars that are coming in, in terms of ad valorem tax increase, there's a little bit, but not much, maybe one percent growth. That's really all we're getting. Employee compensation and benefits, one of the big issues here is that we are proposing a thousand dollars for every city employee full-time. And also a half percent with a hundred dollars minimum for all employees. So what that does is, is that provides, and this is embedded in their salary, the thousand dollars. So, so this is a significant increase. It's also, we're increasing the, the Christmas bonus from three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars. We're not changing any other benefits. Part of the, one of the things we wanted to send a message to all city employees is that they would all get raises, and they would actually get raises embedded into their salary. Haven't had that for the last few years, so that, that's a step forward. The, what we're also doing is we're, when we looked at this, we also looked at the numbers for next year. We feel like we can also have a pay increase next year. We, because you, you have to be careful. If you're too generous one year, you may not have the money next year. And so as you do this year and the next year, which is the final year of this council's term, you wanna make sure you have the money to be able to sustain what you, what your, what your salaries are. All right, the, the, the next paragraph deals with health insurance. Our health insurance increased eight percent, five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. It's funny, last year, when, when Blue Cross talked to us, they said, expect about an eight percent increase next year. And sure enough, right on, on, on the nose, that's what the cost for us is. Really, the, the major cost is, is, is what the, whatever the, the claims are. The administrative costs are negligible. The claim costs are what, how we rise or fall in terms of that particular fund. We have the incentive program for the first time. We have tobacco secession program for the first time. So employees can earn an additional two hundred dollars. And so we'll, we're, we're going to continue that through next year. We're also going to look at establishing a wellness person or wellness committees throughout the city and, and get it down to the departmental level to, for ideas on wellness. Most of the information I've seen on wellness is that it, it can make a difference over time, but it won't necessarily solve your budget problem next year. So, but, but we will move more and more down the incentive path, that the HSA will maybe almost be entirely incentive driven. That that's probably the direction we're going. But we didn't wanna confuse our salary increase with also, because sometimes if you give a salary and then you pull back a health or you make it more difficult, the employee's going, I'm not getting anywhere. So we wanted to try to make that as, as clear as we could. The next item is funding for equipment. This is on page sixteen-five. It, we're actually two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars less this year than last year. We are spending a million and seven for vehicles, they're replacement vehicles. There are a couple upgrades, but it's basically replacement. Four hundred and eleven thousand for commuter, excuse me, computer and communication equipment. And we're also, the air packs and all the additional masks for the entire fire department, that's seventy-eight air packs, sixty-two masks and regulators, ninety-eight spare bottles, all of, all the breathing apparatus. And that's six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, that's gonna be there. We're also gonna be replacing the utility kiosks for utility payments. We're actually gonna be buying two of those. And we're also fourteen police vehicles and the, the equipment that goes with those vehicles. The next item's the electric fund. Electric fund, all we're doing is passing through the wholesale increase. The net, the net wholesale increase, the state hadn't done anything, was around five percent. So we would, we would draw that back. But what, what has made it really complicated is the state of North Carolina has done away with utility franchise tax, which was an embedded tax that none of us knew we were paying. I mean, we knew it in the city because we, we get that revenue. But the average person doesn't know that that's part of the rate. So that means it draws the wholesale rate back to only an increase of like two point one six percent, two point three percent really to us. But what people are gonna see on their bill is the, currently, when you look at your bill, it says three percent. When now, next, next year after July first, it's gonna say seven percent. That's seven percent sales tax. And we're gonna try to get some language on that to try to explain to people that that's the sales tax which replaced the utility franchise tax. But if I talk to anybody that I know, they're gonna look at me saying, what planet are you from? So, I mean, but, but that-
Good luck with that.
Good luck, yeah, I know. I, I don't know that that's gonna work. So anyway, but, but I think if you're asking, but if you're talking to someone in a grocery store, what are we doing with regard to electric? All we're doing is passing on our wholesale increase, we are not marking it up. Okay. All right, water and sewer fund, no rate increase right now, but around the corner is, it, they'll start coming. Modest increases, probably maybe around two percent. One of the things we'll have to finally decide is what we're gonna do with the, the system expansion fees. System expansion fees really represent only about one percent. You know, if, if we, if we draw those back a little bit, it might increase the, the rates because you will have to do capital projects. Whether you do, whether you use a lot of system expansion fees or a little bit of a system expansion fees, you're still gonna have some modest rate increases. But that, that is gonna be something that probably will take place a little later on this year when we talk about utilities. Stormwater fund, if you notice, you're seeing a lot more projects, capital projects, because the, the new rates are in, coming this year, and we are doing exactly what the council said, which is pushing these into capital projects. The challenges ahead, on the last page, there are three things that, that we should be concerned about, among probably a hundred others. But these are the three big ones. The sales tax performance with the new state funding formula. What, if you look at the pie chart, what we have now, we are becoming more and more reliant on the sales, sales tax. We, last year, we were about nine point three million, now we're around fourteen million dollars. Because what, again, what the state did is to say, we're gonna take all that utility franchise tax money, about three point seven million dollars, and it's gone. Those corporations don't have to pay it anymore, but we're gonna, they're gonna charge you on the sales tax side. And the city is gonna get and be held harmless with that new sales tax money. So our sales tax money will go from nine million to fourteen million. Now, what we're saying here is sales tax performance and this new state funding formula. I hope that all works. We all hope it all works, because it's all predicated on that. Now, what if it just doesn't work so well and we lose a half a million? Or we lose three quarters of a million and we don't find that out to the end of the next year? Well, that's, that's the thing. Now, now, we've had some people that say, actually, it will make us money. And that'll be a good problem to have. But that's one of the things that we're gonna watch, be careful, talk to Electric Cities, also talk to the League of Municipalities and everybody else, and we'll be monitoring and, and, and trying to make sure that, that we're able to sustain ourselves there.
Question. Can the county do anything with this additional sales tax that you're saying we're getting?
It appears they're gonna get some money out of this as almost like a windfall. But they cannot do any more to us than they have already done.
Okay, all right.
They've done us in as, as, yeah.
So, so if, with this new-
Yeah.
-formula and everything.
Yeah, they-
And they can't come in and say, okay, they cannot do that.
It's only the legislature that can't. Because if the legislature changes the formula, the legislature can give us, or it could give us more or take it away. But right now, so, so it should be even, but that's one of the things we have to be careful of.
So the county's getting some sort of a windfall?
I think so, that's what a lot of the projections are. That's what a lot of the projections are.
They could invest in bus transportation for their citizens.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The second is the county, Gaston County property tax valuation. And maybe as early as this September, they were saying they may be able to give us some preliminary numbers for next year, but I don't know. We'll, we'll see. They, they think it's going to be flat, but actually that the values will be high in the east and low in the west in the county. Where Gastonia is, is we sit in the middle. You know, will we, will we be even at the end? If we're even, then we kind of know where we are. If for some reason it actually would be lower, it has never been ever lower, not in anyone's recorded memory. So that will be a, that'd be a concern. So the, what happens with property tax valuation? Then the third thing is, is the continued economic recovery. You know, as long as we, you know, we're getting some more development, you know, a little bit, and we're okay. And so that's, that's a very quick summary. There's also a capital projects budget. Take a look at that. We have, most of it is stormwater, water and sewer and electric. We have some other smaller projects, and we can talk about that at the, at the work session. And I don't know, Mayor, if there are any other citizens, if there are any citizens that are here that want to comment, this is their opportunity to do that.
This is a public, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to or ask questions in the audience? Okay. Questions of council? At this time, we have plenty of opportunity here.
I was going to say, we've got several chances coming up.
Yeah. Okay. And that, that, as Ed said, is the May fourteenth at five-thirty is the first work session upstairs. Okay, thank you, sir. We will continue looking at that novel that you had delivered. It's big. And, okay.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
The...
Yes, you can make a motion to public close the public hearing, or the mayor can just declare it.
I can. I declare it closed. I can declare it open. Okay. Item twenty-one is the citizen committee appointments needed for twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and that is on page twenty-one. Very, very interesting there, because there's, they've given a good response, the department heads and so on, of who, most people that do want to be, go another term or not go another term. So, Ed, you go, I believe.
Before you start, Mr. Mayor, when we got the agendas, I looked at the appointments, and I know there's, there's a couple of spots that are not going to be open. And I've had a conversation with Councilman McAtier and some others, and we're not even sure who we want for appointments or anything. Could I make the motion that we postpone this until the next meeting on May twentieth to discuss appointments, so that give us more time to...
Sure. You know, one of the things we wanted to do is, is if we get this to you in May, it allows you time to process it. If you, if we get it to you too late, then the next thing you know, we're into, whatever works best for you.
Well, I liked seeing it in the vacancies, but I was like, you know, from, by the time you sit down Friday and over the weekend to go over this, and then Tuesday, we need names, it just seemed quick. And it is earlier this year, which I certainly appreciate, so maybe if we had time to get some names together.
In terms of protocol for this, if there's an indication that individuals are willing to serve again, then I assume there's been a conversation between either a department head or someone from staff who's had that conversation with that individual. So we either have the opportunity to speak with that individual personally, or just go ahead and take that indication that staff has given us and make an appointment and a nomination, I assume.
Yes, I think, in each of these cases, the departments contacted them, and so they've been contacted once, but again, if the council wants to do it, kind of check, check in on...
I was going to say, there's several letters from staff people that contacted them.
Yeah, we tried to get that done on the front end.
Yeah.
You got a motion for a second.
To postpone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You were talking about the further date, I mean, the date at the twenty...
You know, I think what we've done in the past, and it's just, it's a work in progress, and so we'll, we'll do the majority on the twentieth of what we're aware of, and then after that, we fill in the gaps up until the first of July.
Okay. Motion's made in the second. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Ed, we've got the consideration of, item twenty-two, consideration of cancellation of the July first, twenty-fourteen city council meeting.
Traditionally, the city council does that now. If, and if the council's going to do that, we'd like to identify that as early as possible for legal, legal ads that might be posted for that meeting. And it's...
So moved. Second.
To cancel it?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on that? There is a motion in the second. All in favor of the cancel in July one? Pleasure, please. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. City attorneys report?
Grease versus Galway. Send everybody a real quick...
Yes, yeah.
...to the internet. And I don't think it changes anything for this board, except that we don't have to worry anymore when by reflex, a city council member says, in Jesus' name we pray. I think everyone here knows that the purpose of legislative prayer is to ask for wisdom in your deliberations and to set a solemn tone to establish civility, as the court said in its opinion yesterday. As long as you aren't preaching conversion or threatening damnation, an incidental mention of a deity is not going to invalidate, you know, your proceedings. So I think everyone has handled their legislative prayers at this body appropriately, and will continue to do so, and we can now move forward without, you know, everyone looking at me like I have to play policeman when someone slips up and throws J.C. and the boys into prayer. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Did they say anything about taking up a little offering?
Can't do that.
For the mayor.
Just, just a kind of a quick statement and maybe a question for the council to consider maybe for a later date, but I don't want to get into everybody's personal life, but I think everyone up here is probably of the Christian faith and based on the prayers that have been offered. But in reading that decision, I found it interesting that some municipalities that have other faiths within their limits invite ministers, even though, even though their elected board or body does not have members of a different faith or religion, they invite ministers from other faith and religions to occasionally come in. You know, it's kind of on a, they call and say, can I give the prayer? And then you put them on. I think it would be nice that if we were to extend that invitation to some of the other faiths within our community to, to once in a while come and offer a prayer. And something to think about. You don't need to decide tonight, I just...
We did that in the legislature with the visiting ministers and the doctor of the day, one on the front, one on the back, in case you need either one. But I mean, they, we had that one.
I just thought it would show a nice diversity, you know, reflective of our citizens. Something to think about.
Okay. City attorneys report? Ed?
The...
I mean, managers here.
Yeah. Sometimes I like to be the attorney. Sometimes he likes to be the manager.
I've checked it all. Now, it's your turn, okay.
Just a reminder, the electric cities meeting is at six at the conference center, and I think everybody that's signed up, I think we signed up ahead of time for that. And the five o'clock meeting is in another room up there that has been established. We'll, so we'll work on that. And, and as you look at the budget, if you have a question between now and the fourteenth, let us know, because we want to try to be as efficient as we can on the fourteenth. And, but if you see anything where you have a question, please let us know. Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to have the city council report, Ms. Gray.
I just have a, wanted to remind everyone as far as on May the fifteenth, and I think you've got this flyer in your packet, this is something that our Gastonia Parks and Recreation Department is sponsoring. The young guns will be the instructors for the handicap shooters. I understand there'll be quite a few of veterans there, and this is the second year in a row that our Parks and Recreation has done this, and this is a phenomenal outreach. So if anybody, I know we've got an audit bid committee meeting that night at five forty-five, but this starts at five o'clock. So it would be something that I think anybody that would want to come out to the ski range at Rankin Lake and see what goes on would certainly be impressed with what our Parks and Recreation Department's doing. So just as a reminder. Thank you.
No report. Pierce, huh?
Just a quick report. Wanted to say that we had the first concert of the concert series Friday night. Excellent, excellent concert. And if you missed the other entertainment side of the music, you really missed a good show. I want to thank everyone for coming out and...
No one got burned.
No one got burned. And the fire department was there. I tell you, they were right there with those fire extinguishers. They were ready to go. And new sergeant downtown and captain downtown have done a good job, very, very easily working with them. And just want to offer a public apology for all the events going on next week with, we've got the Police Memorial Week, we've got the, there's so many events going on next week, and I'm going to be out of town the entire week on business. So I just want to apologize in advance to everyone that I will not be attending, and it's not because I don't want to be there or do not want to attend, I would just be out of town. So it's easier to kind of publicly do it than make a thousand long calls. So, but that is the reason I'm not attending those events. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
No report.
Dr. Curling?
I know there are not a lot here, but for those of you in the audience that are mothers, happy Mother's Day this Sunday, and I think most of you here have mothers or remembrances of mothers, and please be sure to do what is right on Mother's Day for your mother. So, thank you.
All right. The, since the last meeting, groundbreaking down at New Hope Road, Carruthers, and Pacific Coast Feather Company, which is actually, says Gastonia, it's in Ranlo, but it's a lot of jobs that came from on the other side of the country.
Nebraska? Nebraska?
No, it was, no, no, no. I've got his card, hold on a minute. Crawford, joke, Salem, Oregon, I think. It is on the east, the, it is on the Pacific coast. Yeah. I've got this card, I think I have it a minute. And then, of course, we, Brendan and Ed and my man and I, we had the Keep Gastonia Beautiful Luncheon and the awards last Thursday. They're representing that. Is there anything else that anyone would like to add at the end? Well, certainly look forward to seeing everyone at the budget, and certainly, as Dr. Curling said, certainly happy Mother's Day and happy remembrance. I'd like to have a motion at the meeting adjourned?
Yes, adjourned.
Okay, let's go. All right, thank you. Oh, Seattle, Washington, that's where it was. Seattle, Sleepless Inn, Seattle. That's where they're from. Sleepless in Seattle.